In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, we advise that a notice of this meeting is made by posting on the bulletin board, Town Hall, and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place at the Town Hall at 7:30 p.m. on Wednesday, September 4, 2019. Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. To begin tonight's meeting, we start with the approval of the minutes of July 17th meeting, which were distributed last week. Does anybody have any additional comments or corrections to the minutes of July 17? Okay. Anybody?
Move approval as submitted.
Make a motion to approve as submitted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. We're going to do a vote. We're going to do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained.
They'll let the record show that I didn't vote on that. I wasn't here.
You were not here, you didn't vote. Thank you. So the meeting minutes from July 17th are past thirty-two years. Good, thank you. Our first memorialization of two tonight is of application 19012 Royal Gymnastics. Also received. Did anybody have any additional corrections or edits to the memorialization? Okay. For this one, can you read those who can vote? Is that okay? Okay, so of those, anybody who'd like to make a motion to approve the memorialization?
So moved.
Second.
You mean Beckner?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. The second application, 19013 Alex Rubenstein. We also received this. Any additional edits, questions? Okay, I believe this was at the same meeting? Is it the same?
It was.
Hmm? Anybody make a motion to approve this memorialization? So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
You mean Beckner?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Thank you. The second application, 19013 Alex Rubenstein. We also received this. Any additional edits, questions? Okay, I believe this was at the same meeting? Is it the same?
It was.
Hmm? Anybody make a motion to approve this memorialization? So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
You mean Beckner?
Yes.
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 Mark Maslow?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Okay. We have one application tonight, application 19014 Short Hills Associates. This is for preliminary and final major site plan approval?
That is correct. Good evening. My name's Elardo Webster. I'm a member of the law firm of Inglesino Webster, Wichita, Scottland, Taylor. We're located at 600 Parsippany Road in Parsippany, New Jersey. We represent the applicant, Short Hills Associates LLC, the owner and operator of the mall at Short Hills. Notice of this application was provided 10 days prior to the hearing in the local newspaper record, the Star Ledger, and published on August 24, 2019. Notice has also been given to all property owners owning property within 200 feet of all directions from the outer boundaries of the subject property. Certified mail return receipt requested. The notices were mailed on August 23, 2019, more than 10 days prior to the hearing. An affidavit of service of notice was sent to the Board Secretary on August 29, 2019, affirming proper notice and providing proof of same. I presume we don't have any issues? Thank you. Original affidavit publication received from the Star Ledger was subsequently forwarded via overnight mail on September 3. Did you receive that? Great. We are here before you this evening seeking site plan approvals in conjunction with a change in use and tenancy within a portion of the mall. The application pertains to the former Saks Fifth Avenue Department Store, which is a three-level building that has been devoted entirely to retail use prior to Saks vacating the mall in 2016. Since Saks's departure from the mall, the applicant has successfully repurposed the first two levels with retail users. Indigo occupies the first level, and Crate and Barrel occupies the entirety of the second level. The re-tenanting of the third level has proven to be more challenging from a retail occupancy perspective for a number of reasons, including the fact that the third level does not have direct access to the interior of the mall. The proposal before you this evening is to convert the third level, which consists of approximately 32,693 square feet of pre-existing retail space to office use, which is permitted pursuant to the Township Code. Our tenant is Industrious, which is one of the nation's largest premium flexible office workshare providers. No changes are proposed with respect to the building or the overall mall site, with the exception of interior fit-up for Industrious. We will still have excess parking, taking into account this new office use, and there are no variances associated with this application from which we are aware. I am in receipt of a number of correspondence from town officials. I'm in receipt of a letter from your forester, Mr. Doty, I think, and he had no comment. I'm in receipt of your engineering review letter from Ms. Callahan, and she had no comment. And we are, as part of this application, seeking waiver of the environmental impact statement requirement. We are in receipt of a letter from Battalion Chief Pizzano, and we agree with all the conditions listed. The only conditions are post-approval conditions and building permit conditions, so we will agree and we will comply. We are in receipt of a letter from the Milburn Police Department, and the application, I'm sorry, the letter states that the Milburn Police Department has no comment on this application. We are in receipt of a planner's letter, which we're going to provide some testimony and respond to, but essentially it states that there is no change to the exterior, that office uses are permitted, the mall is overparked per the existing ordinance. I'm going to ask, I have with me this evening John Egger, who is the Development Director from the Taubman Company. I'm going to ask him to come up and speak in a minute. I also have with me Kevin Bogerman, who is the Director, he's our civil engineer, and he's here just to answer any questions that may arise. I don't intend on putting him one as a witness this evening. And Jamie Cox, who's the acting mall manager at the mall of Short Hills, in case there are any particular questions that my first witness, Mr. Egger, cannot answer. So with that, Madam Chairwoman, I would request that Mr. Egger be sworn in, and I have a couple of questions for him.
Thank you.
I do. It is John, J-O-H-N, Egger, E-G-G-E-R-T. Address is 200 East Long Lake Road, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48304.
Thank you, Mr. Egger. Would you please provide the Board the benefit of your experience and what your role is in the company?
Yes, I'm a Director in our Development Department. I've been with Taubman for 19 years and worked for another developer in Florida for 14 years prior to that. My role is basically in directing and managing projects relating to either new mall construction, expansions of existing shopping centers, renovations of shopping centers, or re-tenanting and repurposing of vacant anchor space, which is becoming an increasingly common thing in our industry.
Mr. Egger, you've had a chance to obviously participate in preparation of the application. You've had a chance to review all the correspondence that I've previously acknowledged. There are a couple of issues that the planner has indicated needed addressing. Would you please address those for the Board?
Certainly. And if Paul is here, sorry, Paul Phillips, sorry. Would you just mind asking me the things you were interested in specifically, and I'll address each one? Is that okay?
I would prefer if we can reference just the letter that was provided.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yep.
Grab a copy. Sorry about that. Thank you. I'm sorry, I was in transit this morning and just got this via email today, so I didn't have a hard copy on me.
That's fine, I appreciate it. If it's okay, yeah, if we could just...
I'll direct you to what I need you to respond to.
No problem.
Just this section here, talking about parking, why we, talk to them first about the business, and then talk a little bit about the issue and how many people we think are going to be there.
Right. Okay. With regard to the parking, right now we've got an excess of parking at the shopping center as our attorney has indicated. I'm actually reading item three from the memo from Paul here, and just to make a correction here, he's indicating the required ratio of two and a half spaces per thousand square feet. It's actually four per thousand or one per 250 square feet. However, the way your code works, as indicated here, is it is the greater of that figure or .8 spaces per worker that is using the office space. We've got a situation here where it's difficult to ascertain the precise number of users that are going to be in the future office space, based on the use of the, you know, simply based on square footage, the parking requirement is correctly stated here as being 131 spaces. We've got existing retail parking requirement at 4.25 spaces per thousand. Based on the square footage of retail, it requires 5,786 spaces, so a total requirement based on that metric of 5,917 spaces, leaving 176 excess at the shopping center. If you revert to the other metric at .8 shopping spaces per worker in the space, depending on how you want to define that number, we looked at Industrious's proposed floor plan. They have an office layout that shows, you know, single desk and multi-desk offices. If you add all of the desks that are in that floor plan, you come up with a total of 345 desk spaces. So in theory, there's a 345-person maximum that would be working in the space at any given time. What the tenant has told us is that typically the space is not full. There is a range of use. It varies depending on location, varies depending on time of day and day of year. Typically, they have anywhere from 25% utilization to 75% utilization of the space. The business plan on which they operate, just if I can elaborate on it for a second, is they've got about 90 individual office spaces, again, some with one office, some with many as eight offices, that are located within their 30-plus-thousand square feet. They rent out those spaces, you know, on a exclusive basis to any given certain tenant. So this is not flexible workspace in the sense of there being hot seats, such that somebody would be sitting in this seat on Tuesday and somebody else would be sitting in that same seat on Wednesday. The folks who are renting these spaces are renting the spaces exclusively for their use, so they can store materials, files, paperwork, personal belongings if they want to, as they come back the next day, or, you know, come back the next week, or whenever the case may be. So from that standpoint, they've got people who are, you know, using the offices sometimes and not using them other times, and depending on the number of workers they have at any given time, they may or may not, you know, be fully utilizing that space. Just for metric purposes, we ran a 50% utilization. If you looked at that, based on the .8 spaces per employee, it would yield a requirement of 138 spaces, again, based on 345 employees divided by two, which would be 172 and a half. That would then yield a total parking requirement of 5,924 spaces, leaving in excess of 169 spaces, so a few less than the 176 based on the square footage method. If you assumed a full utilization, all 345 desks were being utilized, and ran the .8 per user, based on that, that's a requirement of 276 parking spaces. When added to the retail, it's a total requirement of 6,062 spaces, leaving in excess of 31. So under any metric, we still wind up with an excess of parking, depending on how you want to define the occupancy of the office space.
Have no further questions?
Thank you. Do you have any, anybody from the Board have any questions for this witness?
Can you explain maybe for the public and everyone the concept of over-parking?
When I say over-parking, we have more parking than the code technically requires.
Okay. The excess that you just spoke of.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I just want to know the basis for your knowledge of the operation of Industrious. Is it, do you have personal knowledge of that? Was that information that was furnished to you from Industrious?
It is information furnished to me by Industrious. That is correct.
And do you have any basis to evaluate the validity or credibility of that information that was furnished to you?
Based on the reputation of the firm, you know, they're a recognized operator in their field, you know, I have no reason to question the validity of what they're telling me.
Have you or your organization worked with Industrious in other facilities, either mall facilities or other buildings that Taubman may be involved with?
This is our first opportunity to work with them.
Have you visited any of their sites or where they've done this type of operation?
I have personally not. Thank you.
I have a, just a clarification, just to make sure I understood you properly. You said there were 345 desk spaces.
Correct.
But then you also referenced 90 office spaces. So are those 345 desks within those 90 offices?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell us how long the lease is?
There's no set term period to these leases, from what I understand, talking to the tenant. They typically do a month-to-month lease. Tenants, they'll sign for a longer period of time, but it's typically month-to-month is what they do.
Thank you.
You have the letter, and I recognize that you have not had a chance to review everything. But the first point that the planner makes in the zoning compliance and planning comments are some descriptive inform, requesting some descriptive information regarding the business operation. You've told us generally what it is. How about hours of operation, types of tenants, those kinds of things that are listed in the planner's report?
Sure. The hours of operation are typically your nine-to-five office hours. However, the space will be accessible by the users on a 24/7 basis. Not that we expect a lot of utilization in those, you know, non-typical office hours, but they will have access to the space if they want to be able to use it. The companies, it's a wide array of really all types of sectors. It's financial, legal, in terms of, again, I'm talking about their typical tenancy here. They're not tenants I can speak of directly because, you know, they've not leased the space at this point, they've not built out the space at this point, but typically what they have in other locations, and they've got some 65 locations in 40 cities in the U.S. currently. But financial sector, legal, marketing, design and creative, nonprofit, so really it's a wide array of a typical office user, as I would describe it. They, to the extent that they offer flexible office space, I do think that they cater to startups and new companies who, again, folks who may not want to sign a long-term lease, you know, they will sign a monthly lease and go month-to-month, you know, see how the business progresses and go from there, perhaps even get a permanent office space or longer-term space there or somewhere else at some later point in time. A company that might be growing its business and, again, doesn't necessarily want to commit to a long-term lease, expanding their current headquarters or location, might rent some flexible space at a location such as this. A company that might be newly entering this market but based someplace else, and, again, needing a footboard from which to work, a springboard from which to work, might rent space here locally. So those are the types of folks, you know, you've got some regional branches of a major corporation, again, in kind of a foothold sense, that might also locate a smaller office here, whereas they have a main office at some other location, perhaps in another state or metro area.
In addition to the occupants of each office, the tenants, so to speak, will there be any staff people, staff members that will be on premises for, you know, general operations, whether it be, I noticed there's a, you know, kitchen room, there's probably other rooms there?
There will be staff. I don't know the exact numbers, but it's not a lot of people. I believe there's a reception area and a person who will man that area. There's likely going to be at least one maintenance person to address any issues that might arise from that standpoint, or somebody on call to do that.
Will the tenant be doing their own maintenance as opposed to the mall providing that service to them?
The mall would not be providing any maintenance within the space. It would be the responsibility of, ultimately, of Industrious, and then whatever they work out with their individual sub-tenants, you know, within the individual offices. My guess is they will handle, you know, collection of trash and, obviously, cleaning the toilets and sinks and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Can you speak to security? So you mentioned, you know, potentially 24-hour access. I'm assuming that means either there'll be a keypad or some sort of keyless entry for the people who are tenants, but I would love to hear.
Yes, and let me, not to get into maybe more detail than you want, but I think it's helpful. The layout of the former Saks building, it's a three-level building, as we indicated earlier, there is a surface parking lot on the south side of the building, and because of the grading of the site, if you enter from that surface lot into the building, you're actually coming in on the second level. So Indigo would be below you. You enter at that point from the exterior into a vestibule, a lobby that we've created that is before you get to the Crate and Barrel space. Crate and Barrel has a separate lockable door off of that vestibule or lobby. Also off of that lobby is an elevator that goes up to the third floor and a stairway that goes up to the third floor, both intended to service this tenant. Currently, both, the elevator is locked off and the stairway is locked off because there's no occupancy in the space, and we've got people working in the space or will have people working in there. So we have the ability to lock off the elevator and lock off that stair. The intent here is outside of those nine-to-five hours to do just that, to lock off those areas. Next obvious question is how's the tenant going to get access to their space? Well, we have the benefit here of having a multi-level parking garage on the east side of the building that services at one level a direct connection into the tenant's space through a door on the east side. And that will allow them access during those off-hour and weekend times. It will also be open or accessible to them on a, you know, during the nine-to-five period, and it's a convenient parking location for their users who just want to go right up to that level of the parking deck, which is frankly somewhat underutilized at present, and then, you know, just walk into the building from there. They will have some type of a key card or lock mechanism allowing their tenants in and out through that door during those off-hour times.
Understood, thank you.
And by the way, we've got mall security around the clock, 24/7, that is patrolling, you know, the property as a whole.
And great lighting, as we know.
Thank you.
Security cameras?
All LED, thanks to you folks.
Thank you. Any additional questions for this witness? Okay, thank you.
I have no more witnesses, other than I have the engineer, if there are any questions for him, and I've got the mall operator, the manager, if there are any questions, but if there are no questions, I'm ready to rest my case.
That'd be great. I'd like to just take a moment and just go through the planner's letter myself, just to make sure you addressed the comments that were provided. Thank you for your nice moment. Yes, so the three items, and you provide a testimony regarding parking, to end for you with respect to the parking and access and tenancy. Thank you. Does anybody have any additional questions or concerns that they'd like this applicant to address? Fantastic. With respect to the EIS waiver, which, so you provide a testimony for?
I can have my attorney provide testimony.
I believe this would be...
I mean, I think it's pretty, I think it's self-evident that we're not impacting anything outside the building, so I think it's...
Yes, but I believe we have to have a sworn witness make that statement.
Okay, come on in.
If so.
I do. 51 Rockledge Road, Hawthorne, Rockledge Road, Hawthorne, New Jersey, 07506.
Mr. Bogerman, would you please provide the Board the benefit of your education and training, so that we can qualify you as an expert engineer?
Well, my degree is in land surveying.
Okay.
And I've been working in land surveying for 30 years. I graduated from NJAT with a degree and Bachelor of Science in Engineering Technology Surveying, and been working for Keller &amp; Kirkpatrick for five years now, previously 25 years with those other four firms.
Mr. Bogerman, you've seen the plans we've presented here tonight.
I have.
Just one moment, are you a licensed engineer?
I'm a licensed land surveyor.
Licensed land surveyor, okay.
I think that'll do it, yes.
That's fine, I just, I didn't understand what your license was, thank you.
Mr. Bogerman, have you, you've seen the plans we've prepared for this evening?
Yes.
Is there any, are there any modifications to the exterior of the building?
There are none.
So with that testimony, I would request that the EIS be waived.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do a roll call vote on what we are...
We need someone to move to...
We need someone to move to...
Grant that waiver.
Grant the waiver for the EIS. So moved.
Thank you.
Miriam and Joe Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Okay. Before we turn to vote, is there any discussion by the Board of this application? Okay. Before we go to vote, we open it up to the public, if there are any questions or comments regarding this application for this evening. I have a feeling there are not too many. Thank you. That said, I believe the only item I noted was the compliance with the Fire Marshal's letter.
That's correct. That's right. And the usual conditions that we have in all resolutions.
And all typical resolutions.
That said, I believe the only item I noted was the compliance with the Fire Marshal's letter.
That's correct, that's right. And, and the usual conditions that we have in our resolutions.
And all typical resolutions.
And we have, we will comply, and we agree with all the conditions that the Fire Marshal has issued.
Fantastic, thank you. So with that, is there a motion to approve this application?
I'll make, make a motion to approve.
Is there?
Yes.
Is there a letter?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you, good luck. Okay. We do not, we do not, yes, you may be dismissed.
We, we need you, but.
We would love you, but you, you are welcome to be dismissed as we're moving from the applications onto other businesses.
Eric said we had to do that. Eric said we had to do that.
See ya.
You too.
See you, Mr. Becker. We have a number of items of new business, and the first one is with regard to the Millburn Board of Education, review and recommendations of school facilities project. I don't know if that's, the testimonies from both schools is very, very good. Are you speaking both to the middle school and your first school?
I am. Good evening. My name is Paul Griggs, I'm from the firm of Swirly Cornell and Westfield. We represent the Millburn Township Board of Education. This evening, we also have President Dr. Burton, who's the superintendent, Sheriff Snyder, who is the business administrator, as well as Gregory Sanjon and Caitlin Adams from their architectural firm of Perret Sanjon. We're before the board this evening for courtesy review of two, what I would call, minor projects. One involves the extension of the cafeteria in the middle school, the other one involves a security vestibule at the Deerfield Elementary School. The application for both of these projects has been submitted to the State Department of Education. We would invite any comments or recommendations you might have to either myself, to the architect, or of course to the school administrators who are present. If you have no questions, I would introduce our architect.
I don't believe we have questions, as we don't have.
Thank you. Caitlin Adams, please.
I am not Caitlin Adams. But Rachel Tiedemann is the lead project architect, so we brought her, and because the easel I'm told is broke, I am going to play Vanna White for her.
Thank you. I'd actually ask you to stand just behind these two, so that part of members of our audience and the board can see, and I'm sorry to you, Sharon, grabbing to turn around. Thank you.
So the first one I'll address is the Deerfield Elementary School security vestibule.
Can you just, sorry, in the mic, state your name, just so we have it.
Okay.
For the record, I knew you said it, but.
Right, it is Rachel Tiedemann.
Can you spell your last name again, for the record?
The first school, as I said, I'll address is the Deerfield Elementary School security vestibule. The district is upgrading all of the schools with security vestibules. In this instance, the, the school needed to create, we needed to create an addition outside of the main entrance in order to accommodate that vestibule. The first plan here shows a little bit of context. We have the existing school office to the left-hand side and what used to be the main egress out, and what we're doing is putting an addition on, so if you flip to the next page. This is a demolition of that area right outside of the main office and the hallway adjoining the main office. And this shows you that we are maintaining the egress out still, and we're adding a security vestibule, and rather than just have an awkward space in between there, we're adding a storage room.
And when is the scheduled timeframe, or you're hoping to do construction?
The scheduled timeframe that the district is looking at is the summer of 2020.
Is there?
Do all the schools have security at their entrances?
They, that is what the district chooses to address right now, is by adding a security vestibule. This is the only school that requires an addition, the rest of them, we can accommodate the vestibule with renovations on the interior.
Okay, good, thank you.
This is the Millburn Middle School. Currently, we are doing a multitude of upgrades, but most of them have to do with HVAC upgrades. And if you look at the blue down here, this is our cafeteria addition. There is also a renovation to the existing cafeteria, which is in yellow. So the addition is the main focus here, so if you flip the page, it is a one-story addition, so the rest of the, the floors are not affected by it. And that's the exterior elevation, just for the masonry repairs. All right, on to our floor plan for the addition. This shows a demolition. We will be removing an existing exit stair, sidewalk, and ramp that is out towards the back parking area. There, there is one other addition, we are adding an elevator to make it handicap accessible, the building handicap accessible. So there is an addition that is on the backside of that cafeteria, inside the existing courtyard. This is just the reflected ceiling plan and the renovation of the existing space. Go ahead. The new square footprint of the cafeteria that we're adding is around two thousand one hundred square feet, I think it's two thousand one hundred and thirty-six. The district has a schedule, and in order to accommodate all of the students inside of the cafeteria for one grade, they need to seat around, I believe it's around five hundred students. So this addition will accommodate that, and they can seat all students in one grade at one time. We do have, again, we are providing access, handicap access here. We have a ramp down to this area, too, and then you have your new elevator entrance to make the floors handicap accessible on the side. And, again, this is just a reflected ceiling plan, and the other floor showing the elevator. Oh, this is reflected ceiling plan. And this is the new furniture layout, showing the new seats for the five hundred students.
Great. Great. Will there be any renovations to, like, the, the food where they, where they purchase food and?
Yeah, there is a renovation to the existing space, too, because in order, we tried to reduce the increase in footprint, so we accommodated that by renovating the existing space as well.
Great, yeah. I have two middle school kids, so.
Yeah.
All in. Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much for coming, and good luck with the renovations.
Does anybody have any recommendations based upon the presentation that's been made? Because that's part of the courtesy review.
Absolutely.
So we all seem pretty impressed with it, so I'm not sure that anybody has anything.
There's no solution to making a quieter.
No, probably not.
Go ahead.
The last presentation that we've received on the label of parking lot, and you were in number comments. I don't know if you can speak to, I don't know if you designed that, but you can ask a question.
The question is basically, when we made the recommendations, they said, well, it's too late because we're going to. I was just wondering if it makes a difference if we have comments, if the design's already been done.
This has only been submitted to the Department of Education right now. If you do have recommendations, I'm sure the district would be willing to listen to them.
Yeah. I thought you were asking a question regarding the, the other one. I understand the process. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Oh, we didn't ask for time.
So I believe you know you have forty-five days to make whatever comments, and we'd appreciate if possible to receive a letter as soon as possible relative to your review.
Thank you.
That will, that will move it along with the State Department.
Are available? Here. Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, do you want to, does anyone want to, if we don't want to make any recommendations, because it's the board that makes them, not individual people.
Yeah, agreed.
On behalf of the board, so if we don't have any comments, perhaps a motion we made that we've received the information, the board has no comments or recommendations to make, and then I leave and get that letter out tomorrow.
Excellent.
That's great, great, we appreciate that. Thanks so much for your suggestion.
Thank you. There's no opposition, I would make a motion to, to accept the, the plans and say we have no further comments. And does anyone want to second up? I'll second. Okay, are we doing a roll call vote, or just a voice vote?
Roll call.
Roll call would be good.
Is there?
Yes.
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 Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for the suggestion, counsel. Okay, before we move on, I believe we're, we're going to be moving on to the resolution settle, approving, I'm going to start again. We're going to be moving on to the resolution approving settlement of litigation, as well as ordinance number twenty-five, forty-two, nineteen. Before we do that, this first thing has.
Yeah, I'm recused from hearing this matter by way of explanation. Sometime in two thousand nineteen, the Silverman Group closed on the purchase of a building where my law firm leases warehouse space. Once I learned of the change of ownership of the landlord, I called the township's attorney, Kit Falcon, and told him about it, and since I'm now in a position in my firm where I need to interact with our landlords at times, I was advised to recuse from anything further in connection with the eighty-five Brooklyn Borough matter.
Okay, as such, we're sorry to have you defer, but understand, thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
All right, so how do we begin? We're going to begin, I believe, first with the resolution, and then we'll move on to the ordinance. And who is speaking to this matter?
I guess you.
I guess you.
There is before you now a settlement agreement between the township and planning board and what I'll call the Silverman Group. It's, there's a formal name of several, several owners, all associated with the Silverman Group, to settle certain litigation that was brought against the township of Millburn and the planning board of the township of Millburn, under a builder's remedy lawsuit. I had reviewed the terms and conditions of the settlement agreement with you, the preliminary settlement agreement last month. There have been some changes in, in that agreement, which was furnished to you at the end of last week. We have a resolution for consideration. Give it one minute. The resolution approves the terms and conditions of the settlement agreement, authorizes the execution of the settlement agreement by the chair simultaneously with the execution of the agreement by the township. As noted in the resolution, the township introduced an ordinance to approve the settlement agreement, as well as to adopt the zoning ordinance that is attached to the settlement agreement last night. That ordinance is scheduled for a public hearing and final adoption on September seventeenth. So because we will be approving the agreement tonight, or acting on the agreement tonight, assuming that we adopt the resolution, we don't want to sign the agreement if the township ultimately does not approve the settlement agreement. And the resolution, again, so, so provides. In addition, there are two other conditions. One, that if the settlement agreement is not approved and executed by the plaintiffs within ten days of the execution of the settlement agreement by the township and planning board, then the, both the authorization and the execution is vacated, and there is no settlement. Secondly, assuming that the agreement is executed by us and executed by the plaintiffs within the ten-day period, the effective date of the settlement agreement, and ultimately the ordinance, which we don't enact, is after the settlement agreement is approved by the Superior Court of New Jersey in what's known as a fairness hearing. In any builder's remedy lawsuit, no settlement is effective unless it is approved, that a fairness hearing, a fairness hearing is conducted by the court on notice, both published notice in a number of publications, newspapers, and so forth, notice to a variety of organizations, and people are given the opportunity to appear at the fairness hearing and make any comments, objections, support, and so forth of the settlement agreement. The standard that the court utilizes in reviewing a settlement agreement and ultimately approving it is whether the settlement agreement adequately protects the protected class and the interested parties, who are low and moderate income households in the, in this case, in the region, but ultimately in the state. These builder remedy lawsuits are intended to compel municipalities to address their constitutional affordable housing obligations, and as such, they're not enacted, or they're not brought nor resolved on the basis of a benefit to the plaintiff, who is the builder, but instead on the basis of the benefit to the beneficiaries, who are the low and moderate income families. So the standard is whether or not the development provides an adequate number of low and moderate income units as part of the development of, of the property. All of that will be determined by a court sometime, hopefully before the end of the year, at this fairness hearing. I have nothing else, but I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, see, you touched on a few things, and I just want to echo them back, or just make sure I interpreted it and heard you appropriately. So tonight's meeting and the charge for the planning board with respect to the resolution is to approve it.
Correct.
It then would be, goes back to the township committee at the next meeting, which is, I believe, September seventeenth.
Correct.
At which time, there's a public hearing and an opportunity for public comment before it would be adopted formally.
Correct.
So this is an approval of the planning board, which is our board, which is just determining consistency with master plan, all the things that you just mentioned, the, looking out for the, the settlement agreement protects the interested parties.
Correct.
And that's what we are ensuring, that that's what we, our interpretation of the settlement agreement is.
That's correct.
Okay, so the opportunity for the public to provide comments and feedback on it is before the township committee votes, and that, that's the governing body who makes the final approval on it.
That is correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that's, that's for the public's benefit, who are here, and for the benefit of this board.
And the township, just for your information, the township could have adopted or approved the settlement agreement by resolution, as opposed to having done it by ordinance. Of course, in a resolution form, there's no public participation, there's no hearing.
Right.
It's simply put on the agenda, as you saw when we did our resolutions earlier on the memorializations, there's no public comment, the hearing was finished. Well, municipality, when they adopt a resolution, that's not subject to any hearing, they, they simply adopt it. Township committee elected to authorize the approval through an ordinance process, which then compels a public hearing and allows the public to participate before the decision is made, as opposed to after the decision is made.
Correct. And so we're going to be discussing two things tonight. This first is this resolution, as you've outlined, and then next we will discuss the ordinance.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So with that said, I open it up to the board for any questions, potentially for Ed, or possibly our planner, with, with respect to the read of this resolution of the settlement.
Well, there's one sentence I'd like to read that's in the settlement agreement.
Please.
The parties are. The parties acknowledge that. Oh, sorry, page seven.
Okay, thank you.
Or at the top. Okay, the parties acknowledge that the aesthetic appearance and appeal of the development from the adjoining streets and properties, including specifically all facades, number of units, footprint and height of the buildings constitute significant areas of concern for the township and the neighborhood. Therefore, it is an essential and significant element of this agreement that any development application presented to the planning board shall be consistent with the concept plan and consistent with the ordinance. But it does admit that it's not going to be a happy situation for the neighbors or the township. And I, I have another thought that is escaping me at the moment.
Well, if I can continue while you're thinking about that. And it may come back to you as I say. If you go on in that, in that sentence, the, the idea of that section was to ensure that the developer is confined to the ordinance provisions and the concept plans, and he doesn't deviate from them in any substantial way. There can be, as, as the sentence goes on, de minimis bulk variances, but if you look at the end of that very long sentence, it, it precludes the developer from seeking any variances or deviations from the ordinance relative to five essential items. The use, the number of units, the density, the footprint of the building and the height and stories. So while the developer may seek deviations from minor things, the, the essence of the building in terms of the structure is, cannot be deviated from. And that's, again, the, the purpose of the section.
Okay, and the other thought that has come back to me, and it talks about adequately, adequately protecting the protected class, but it doesn't say anything about the class that's already here, you know, before this whole takes, thing takes place. Somebody objects to having the housing that protects the protected class. It seems like a huge disruption in the area to provide that, and it seems like the consideration of the people already here has, has not really been considered.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Okay, additional comments or questions that arose upon review of the settlement agreement?
I'll call for a motion to approve the resolution.
Yes, so at this point, if the board is ready, we could make a motion to approve the resolution. It would then return to the township committee for the, the following meeting, the public hearing and final approval.
Could I just intervene with a question? Now is not the time to talk about the master plan and that, those issues there. That will come with the ordinance once we get to decide.
Absolutely, thank you. Motion to approve. So moved. Do you have a second on this? I will second.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Do you think Becker?
No.
Diane Iglesias?
Yes.
Jason Halpert?
Yes.
Ryan Mastercayton?
Yes.
Joseph Seiberg?
Yes.
Mark Matzle?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So now, we will discuss ordinance two-five-four-two-nineteen, which comprised Exhibit A of the resolution.
Of the settlement.
Of the settlement agreement, apologies. And this is the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. And this, so, as the accompanying piece, this is what we, as a planning board, are tasked to assess whether this proposed ordinance is consistent with the master plan or is not inconsistent with the master plan. The master plan, which was most recently adopted December twenty eighteen. We've also received, the planning board received a letter from the planner outlining and highlighting some of the pros and cons, I guess you could say, of the, of the proposed zoning ordinance. So I guess I'll open it up to the board to, to discuss, reflect or highlight any concerns or points.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it would be appropriate if the planner was sworn in and testified
Yeah.
as to his findings, his findings as to whether the proposed ordinance is or is not consistent with our existing master plan.
It's flattering, but you don't, do I swear? You do. I don't have the authority to swear and do it.
Well, you do, but I'll.
That's kind of a nice.
You gained a few powers as, as chairman.
Let's have a gavel.
I hope this is your right hand, and you swear that any testimony you will give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident.
I do.
Please state your name and business address for the records.
Paul Phillips, PHI, L-L-I-P-S. The firm is Phillips Price. The address is thirty-three dash forty-one Newark Street, Hoboken, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Long time no see, Ed and Diane.
So Paul, if you would walk us through the.
So let me just be clear on what, I wrote a report, but it's your charge this evening, consistent with the enabling statute, is to identify any provisions of the proposed ordinance which are inconsistent with the master plan. That's your charge this evening, and the section of the MLUL is, for anyone's information, is forty, colon, da, fifty-five D dash twenty-six. This ordinance is on referral, and again, your charge is to identify any provisions which are inconsistent with the master plan. I wrote a memorandum dated yesterday, which I think was received by the planning board. I was asked to weigh in as the planner for the township on the issue of consistency or inconsistency. Let me just briefly kind of summarize that for you, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions before you ultimately make a determination. So the ordinance essentially seeks to establish a new multifamily affordable housing zone on four lots located at the intersection of Chatham Road and Woodland Road. The total area is slightly better than one and a half acres. Your current land use plan basically designates all of these lots consistent with the underlying zoning, which is a B three neighborhood business district, which in addition to permitting retail and commercial uses, also allows for apartments over stores or over retail, but it limits the height to two stories and thirty-two feet. The proposal that's part of the ordinance would seek to allow the site to be developed as an inclusionary housing site, which means essentially there's a required set aside of affordable units. The maximum number of units on the ordinance is sixty-two. There's a requirement that twelve of those units, just slightly less than twenty percent, would be set aside for low and moderate income households. The height that's allowed within this new district basically varies between three and four stories. The ordinance also has specifics in terms of design, such as a required courtyard on Woodland Road. There are also regulations with regard to access parking, building design, open space, landscaping and signage. Your most recent master plan reexamination report was conducted last year, and also the most recent housing element and fair share plan was similarly conducted last year in April of two thousand and eighteen. Among the objectives in the master plan is to create the realistic opportunity to, for Milburn to provide for its fair share of the region's affordable housing. Certainly, this ordinance would be consistent with that objective because there is a mandatory nearly twenty percent set aside. However, neither the master plan or the underlying, the reexamination or the underlying zoning basically designates or recommends a development program which this ordinance basically is designed to implement in terms of the scale of development, the intensity in development and the height of development. So, and again, three to four stories is allowed in the proposed ordinance. The underlying B three land use designation is two stories and one story of apartment over stores where we have much more intensity in terms of residential here. So in that regard, it's my recommendation, it's my analysis that these are areas where the ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan. That's essentially, I'd be happy to answer questions, and if we want to talk about what the implications of, of that are in terms of the ordinance, I'm, I'm happy to do that, or Ed, if you want to do that, but we'll, I'll wait until there's questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Paul. While you're here, does anybody have any questions? Paul?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So when you said that this inconsistent based on the, the master plan says the objective is to protect the character of established neighborhoods. So I wanted to ask you, if you know the density and the height of the building right across on Woodland, there is a complex, so do you know the density in that?
You're talking about the apartment buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah. What I can tell you is, I know that there are two stories. I also know what the permitted density is in that zone. I don't know.
It's bad acres, right?
It's fourteen units per acre is what's permitted. I don't know what the actual density, the built context of that site is. It may be fourteen, it may be less than fourteen, it could be greater than fourteen. I don't know that. All I know is that the zoning permits up to fourteen to the acre, and this is roughly forty units per acre that would be permitted here.
Was that, that was your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure. Go ahead.
I think there are several other things in the master plan that don't seem to make consistency with the proposal here. You've got other goals that are, that are there. The goal about, and I think it was referred to encouraging the appropriate land use to promote the character of the township. And two of the objectives there are right in line with that. And you have goal number two about streets and sidewalks and safety and secure routes to schools. There are about twenty-five kids who walk to school across that site, up the street and across that site. It is probably going to take parents in their cars to get them to school because that's not a very good place to walk with all the access and egress in there. And, and I think.
Is there, was there a question? Or you're just, you're.
No, I was just saying, aren't those things also?
That's okay, okay. I'm sorry, then.
The, the purview of.
So, as you're well aware, Elaine, 'cause you participated as part of the master plan, there are, we had a large number of sort of generic goals and objectives and then specific goals and objectives per element of the master plan. When we do a consistency review, we're typically looking at the land use element of the master plan to determine whether an ordinance is consistent or not. And the only reason that I mention the objective of affordable housing is, is that clearly this ordinance is designed in large part to assist the township in meeting a portion of its fair share housing obligation. That's sort of a level of importance that I thought was something that was certainly relevant to my analysis. Certainly, one can agree or disagree as to whether some of these generic goals may or may not apply to this ordinance, but the key in my mind in terms of consistency relates back to the land use element and the housing element. And as you recall, the land use element did not make any recommendation to change the designation of the site, and as you also may recall, because you approved and adopted the housing element, the housing element did not include or proposed that this site be an inclusionary housing site. So for my purpose, those were the, excuse me, the key factors in terms of how I would evaluate this ordinance relative to the statutory mandate in terms of where there are inconsistencies.
I think it would be important for the board to know what the consequences are if tonight we adopt a resolution that agrees with the conclusion reached by our planner that the ordinance is inconsistent with the township's master plan. What consequence is there tonight if we pass a resolution or a motion that agrees with that conclusion and says that there's an inconsistency? And I don't care whether Paul answers that or our attorney answers that, but I think the board members should know what is, what are the consequences if we agree with our planner that the, excuse me, the ordinance, which is at the heart of the settlement, proposed settlement, is in fact inconsistent with our master plan.
So I'll, I'll take a first crack if, unless, and Ed, you'll tell me if I'm right or wrong, so.
You have the dais.
Thank you. So, in answer to Joe's question, under section sixty-two of the MLUL, which is the municipality's power to zone, basically it says that when an ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan, it requires a majority vote of the full authorized membership of the governing body in order to pass it. So that, if you do the math, would be three. And in, in the adopting resolution, it must state reasons why it is taking that action notwithstanding the fact that there are inconsistencies with the master plan. Does that basically summarize it, Ed?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Well, you ought to switch seats.
No. I'm very happy being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, so.
And by the way, that's our role for any of the ordinances that come forward. This is no different than any other one. We make the determination, you know, in this case, we did get a recommendation from, from our planner, which I think, remember Becker had raised at one of the other ordinances that we talked about where we can have a recommendation and it was more difficult for us to, to ferret through the master plan and independently make the determination. So the board should, should be comfortable in, in making the determination based upon its own review of the master plan and the recommendations of our planner, who has ferreted through it and, and has articulated his, his determination. But this is a more objective kind of determination, it's not subjective. You know, you, you look at it, you see what the goals are, and you make a determination. There's some discretion, but it's, it's a pretty clear, it's consistent or it's not consistent.
May I, but to what you said, Paul, the ordinance is consistent to the fact that it's helping the township meet the goal of the affordable housing.
Yeah.
So it's consistent and inconsistent at the same time.
That's correct. That is absolutely correct. And let me just say one other thing. I mean, this ordinance basically arises out of a builder's remedy lawsuit.
Right.
And this site wasn't originally contemplated as part of our housing plan, and a plaintiff filed the suit, and we had a deal with that plaintiff. I will say to you that ultimately, if we settle, if, if we adopt that ordinance, settle that matter, have a fairness hearing, get a compliance hearing, basically we would then undertake working on our entire housing plan. And ultimately, that housing element and fair share plan that we put together will at some point in the future be amended. And indeed, if the governing body basically adopts the ordinance for this site, that site will in the end be rolled in to the housing element and fair share plan. So while it's not consistent with the master plan now because of the situation with the builder's remedy suit and it wasn't contemplated, if indeed that ordinance passes, then ultimately that will become part. that will become part of your housing element and fair share plan because it will be an inclusionary site that's producing 12 units of affordable housing.
Correct. I think that's an important distinction that you're making, that what we're being tasked to do is to say whether this is consistent or inconsistent with our master plan, I think, as it currently stands.
Right.
And I think you've, I think this discussion has just sort of elucidated that as of right now, this ordinance is not-
And Beth, the facts are the facts. I mean, that's, as Ed pointed out, in an objective view, I mean, all else being equal, it would be nice to say that it's consistent, but quite frankly, for the reasons articulated, it's, it's not consistent, and I think I've given you some framework as to why.
And I appreciate that. And so, we as a board are not asked to say whether or not we want this development or like it, or that's, that's-
That's not your charge this evening, under the statute.
The township committee gets to make that, that final determination. We've been asked if it's consistent or inconsistent. I believe the discussion is, is showing that while some parts are consistent, we are working towards meeting the obligation as a, you know, constitutional obligation. There are things and elements that are not consistent with what we've, what we've determined we want for our town with public input due to everything that we had last year, you know, involving public input. But I, I want to open it up to the board before we, we take this any further. Mark, I'm seeing a hand.
Yeah, I just, I just have a question too.
Go ahead. Just speak up, please.
Yeah, I just, I do recall that in the, in the reexamination date, it was 12, 1918.
It was 18.
That there was a, there was a sample visor in there, there was a recommendation for a goal to increase the height of buildings.
But that, that was, that was confined to the B4 downtown district.
In downtown, yeah.
Yeah. For, for those who didn't hear, the question was, was there a discussion about increasing the height of development? And the answer is yes, but not in the B3 zone, which is the zone of consideration. Just making sure everybody heard that. Did you have a comment?
I don't have a question for Paul. I have a comment, so if Paul's done.
Anybody else need Paul?
Anybody else want to ask a question?
You may say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Beth. I, I just wanted to make the case that I think that the inconsistencies go beyond Mr. Phillips' review, and I, I do believe that this ordinance is inconsistent with our zoning in terms of its intent, its structure, and its depth. And that really bothers me, and Ed and I have had this conversation. Zoning is supposed to provide guidance and control, and a level of control, and it shouldn't provide the extent of specificity and design, guidance, and stipulations that this, this ordinance suggests. And I believe that those things should be agreed upon in a, in a separate forum, in which they were. So, I do have a problem going forward if we were to approve an ordinance with the specificity, with the depth, with the guidelines, something that goes well beyond any ordinance in our zoning, well beyond any ordinance in our zoning. I think it sets a bad precedent. So, beyond what you've stated tonight, I do think that there are some other issues that should drive that decision.
So, before we move on, I want to stay on that for one moment, because what I, and I don't know how we're going to vote, and it's still to be determined, but if we do determine as a board that, that this ordinance as proposed is inconsistent with the master plan, I believe what we'll do is have our secretary draft a letter to the township committee explaining, and it'll include probably some of the same language that we've just been talking about tonight. There are inconsistencies, there are inconsistencies. I'm guessing you feel it's important to also reflect some of the, these comments that you just made, that, if I'm hearing you right, and I want to make sure I'm paraphrasing it kind of back to you to make sure I understand what you're saying, that you feel that it's, it's too specific, that it's, it's providing that sort of an overbearing amount of guidance. So, that's inconsistent with-
It provides a level of guidance that's inconsistent with the rest of our zoning ordinance. Okay, so, and that's, that's it. That's it. It has nothing to do, has nothing to do with my feelings about the project or not.
I understand.
It is basically a litmus test. It's a litmus test. That's all we're providing tonight in its consistency with the master plan, and that's it.
Okay.
I think it would be prudent to have our planner speak to why it was written up that way, as much as you're able.
Perfect.
As long as I can rebut the planner. Planner to planner.
Your, I, your point is well taken, and certainly, if you look at your existing ordinance, the level of detail and specificity here goes way beyond that. But let me try and explain the, the logic behind that, just so that the, the board is kind of aware. So, the, the ordinance actually reflects the settlement agreement, and not just the settlement agreement, but it reflects and really is intended to sort of enforce all of the particulars of the development, including a lot of the design objectives that were part of the negotiations with the plaintiff over the course of numerous meetings. And what ultimately was agreed to as part of the settlement agreement and the, and the ordinance. And it's a 12-page ordinance, which is highly unusual, I will, I will agree with you. But I think the level of detail in that ordinance is intended to, to ensure that the site design, the, the building design, some of the amenities, some of the things that I talked about are part and parcel in terms of requirements, so that ultimately, when it comes time, if it comes time, if the ordinance is passed, that the applicant comes before the planning board's site plan approval, they're basically locked into certain things that were part of that negotiation and that were intended not only to assure a project of a high-quality design, but to basically protect the public interest, a lot of it being in terms of the view shed, softening the mass of the building, all these things. The, I, I guess the issue, Dan, is if that were not in there to the level of specificity, you know, a developer can simply say, no, I'm not doing the courtyard, it's not part of the ordinance. No, I'm not doing the building step backs, it's not in the ordinance, I don't have to do it. And, and the other thing is, the, the developer here, the builder's remedy litigant basically as part of the negotiation, agreed to all these things. And it was an exhaustive and very difficult, very difficult negotiation. The only other thing I'll add is that I've been involved in a lot of inclusionary ordinances over since 2015 Supreme Court decision. I've done it on both sides. I've represented developers as well as municipalities. And it's no longer unusual to tailor fit an ordinance to a particular concept plan when you're dealing with an inclusionary housing site, which, and when, whether it's a builder's remedy litigant, or an intervenor, or just a property owner who's sort of negotiating a zoning, and implementing zoning, it's not unusual anymore to have a level of specificity, maybe not 12 pages, Dan, but the principle.
Paul, I'm not going to debate anything you said. I understand, I understand all of that. And I know this was done just so the, so the public could hear this, because I, I know this, I understand it. You said two things. One, you said that the, the applicant agreed to everything. The applicant agreed to everything with the township, okay? So, there is something binding there between the township and the applicant in an agreement, all right, that says that they have to specifically do certain things, all right? So, that agreement aside, why do all those things specifically have to be reflected in the zoning? That's, that's my basic concern.
Can I answer that?
And, well, no, and then I'm going to go back to another thing that you said.
I have to remember that, though.
All right? Another thing you said, that you've done many of these, and I think there is levels of specificity that can be ingrained into these ordinances. I just feel that we went a little bit too far. I don't want to debate, I don't want to debate this tonight, all right? Those are my concerns. My concern is not so much about this, my concern is going down the road, not even specifically about another, another related type of, of situation, but any ordinance going down, or how specific we would have to get and how much control that we, we, we ingrain into our ordinance. That's what concerns me, because this, I believe this kind of sets a precedent. Now, where you've, here's a question I will ask you, where you have done it in other townships? And you've, and you said you've done it to the level that you've did it, you did it here?
In some cases, not as great a level, in some cases, yes.
All right. In the cases where it has been at the same level, Paul, all right? How is that, or have you seen any effect on the rest of the zoning ordinance going forward?
Well, I think that i, i, if you're worried about precedent, and this is just my professional opinion, I think it's a good thing. Personally, I think your ordinance now lacks a lot of safeguards in terms of standards, development standards, design guidelines and standards that would and can protect the public interest. So, I don't, as a planner, have a fear if, and maybe not going to this level of specificity, but to buttress the, the ordinance per se. I, I don't see that as a problem, and I see other towns going completely in this direction. And particularly when it's development in either urban areas or developed suburbs as opposed to rural areas, municipalities are going in this direction in terms of the level of detail and specificity. But in answer to your very first question about let the settlement agreement, don't put in the ordinance, I will just say, there are a number of design standards in here that are not in the settlement agreement, that are not. The settlement agreement did not get into the level of specificity as the ordinance. And again, I, I think it's designed to protect the township, but-
Madam Chairman.
You're right.
Madam Chairwoman.
It's fine.
I think that this is all very interesting, but I think it's beside the point. We've already voted, as I understand it, on the resolution approving the settlement.
Right.
So, we're talking about now, something very specific, and that is that the planner has advised the board that in his professional opinion, the proposed ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan.
Correct.
And I think he's dead right, and I'll make a motion that this board adopted position that the proposed ordinance that we've been asked to look at is inconsistent with the existing master plan. That's all we've been asked to do.
Correct.
So, that's my motion.
I would like to make, excuse me, one more statement.
Let's see if we get a second on the motion.
She seconded and she can, before we take the vote, I will allow that. Okay. Going to what you did say, Elaine, is that protecting the public interest is part of the consistency we're looking for. And by this level of ordinance protecting, we are getting protective of the public interest and the neighborhood. So, it, you know, there's, like you said, there's consistency and there's inconsistency.
No. No. Okay. And before we take, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we take a vote.
I, I would just ask, ask whether the movement and second would also reflect the fact that consistent with the planner's review, that it is consistent with a portion of the master plan as it relates to the satisfaction of the constitutional obligation, but inconsistent with the provisions consistent with what?
I would accept that amendment.
Sorry. Can I ask a question before?
Is there a second on that amendment?
Let's, let's ask a question, and then before we do-
I just want to make sure.
We're close, but I want to make sure everybody feels comfortable understanding. So, I just- We, we're going to go back and do it again.
Okay. Just so I'm crystal clear, because I've never been involved in something this detailed as well. So, we approved the resolution saying that we were okay with the settlement agreement. So, the settlement agreement is as it stands, right? So, the ordinance, we're looking at the height, the building height that, as is stated in the ordinance, is inconsistent with the master plan according to Paul's analysis. If, just hypothetically, if this ordinance came, Dan's point is that it doesn't need to be so specific in the ordinance. But if an ordinance came to us that was not so specific to include the building height requirements?
Generally, an ordinance would.
Generally would.
It would. That would be a difference. It would be a difference. Saying a courtyard, saying 83, there were some-
Go to that ordinance, and it's very specific in terms of where everything should be.
Okay.
That's my problem, but let's let it go. I'm going to go, even though I don't agree with what Joe said, I'm going to go with what Joe said, okay? So, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Is that an answer to your question?
Yep.
Okay. So, we're going to back up, and we're going to, that motion and second is negated. We just cleared the slate, because there has been some amendment to it, so I, I, I-
Do that?
Well, I think what we have is, we have-
To dismiss the motion?
Because both you just, in the middle of it, he said he wanted to, but then wasn't seconded as an amendment?
I seconded the amendment.
Okay, I didn't hear that. I called it, we started getting, and then there were questions.
Excuse me, I did have my finger up to speak, and you, you seconded it before I got to speak after Joe, Elaine, you didn't see.
But you discuss after the motion was seconded is usually usual.
No, I was, Elaine, I had just not been addressed by the chairwoman because you were facing her, and she didn't see.
Sorry.
Well, I, I felt it was appropriate that I was able to get my comment in.
Go ahead.
I, I gave it. Thank you.
So, we have, we had a motion that was made and seconded. I had asked for consideration of an amendment to the motion, the movement amended the motion, the second or seconded that amendment. So, we now have before us the amended motion, which is a determination or recommendation to the township committee that the ordinance is consistent with one objective in the master plan as it relates to affordable housing or satisfaction of the affordable housing obligation as set forth in the planner's letter, but is inconsistent with the master plan and the provisions that again are set forth in the planner's letter.
Thank you.
And we should take a roll call on that.
We should take a roll call, and nobody should speak. Dan, there.
No, I am, I am going to speak. Just relax, Beth, for a second. No, yes, yes, it's an inconsistent, a yes vote is-
Inconsistent.
It's inconsistent.
So, the vote is for, this is inconsistent with the master plan, so a yes vote says yes, this is inconsistent.
Correct. Just want to make sure it's clear on me.
Dan O'Bair.
Yes.
Elaine Becker.
Yes.
Fine, Ed, go. Wear your planning board hat. We're just talking about-
Yes, my planning board hat, yes, for that one particular-
Yes.
Yes. It's inconsistent.
Joseph Snyder.
Yes.
Mark Mattzel.
Yes.
Mary Ann Solarno.
Yes.
Vessel.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have the secretary send a letter to the township committee before they-
But Ed, where does the amended vote go, that it's consistent with affordable housing?
Yeah.
It's in there, it's in there.
Yeah.
That was my hesitation.
So, now this will, they need the majority. Because it's inconsistent, but it's consistent, so-
So, we can't conclude the meeting until we have a motion to conclude the meeting.
Yeah, but I'd like to know that.
Yep. That means they need four votes.
They need four.
They need four.
Three, majority.
They need a majority. Oh, they need three votes. Oh, okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I will make a motion, yes. I will second.
Hold a favor.
Aye, aye.
And you post one still longer? This meeting is adjourned at 8:55 PM, and I mean, when you send that, will that also go to the board, so we all have our record?